Vice Mayor Anderson, here. Mr. Butler.
Present.
Mr. Dawson.
Present.
Commissioner Lucas.
Present.
Mayor Rainey.
Present.
We have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you. We are called to order. Commissioner Lucas, will you lead us in the prayer and pledge, please?
If you please stamp. Bow your heads. Dear Lord, we just thank you for this evening. We ask that you be with us tonight as we make decisions for the betterment of our community. God, lead us and guide us. And God, we'd ask a special blessing tonight over the people of Ukraine. God, be with them during this time. Bring peace to that area as only you can. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of agenda? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Mr. Dawson, I believe, made the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye.
Public hearings, they are with the items. Citizen comments, and I understand the first two people who signed up spoke the last time. So, and we know your position, so if there's someone else that would like to speak, that's new, would that be okay? So if there are two more people who would like to speak, if you haven't signed up... Sir?
Is it possible to turn the volume up? I can't hear a thing.
I don't know. Can we turn the volume up?
Can you hear us?
I don't think anybody has a problem hearing me. My voice is loud.
Okay. Are there two other people who would like to speak that have not signed up already?
Is this for the public hearing?
This is for the citizen comments.
Got it.
Okay. Then we will stick with the... with the people who are signed up.
Ms. Julie Fisher.
Give us your name and your address, and just a reminder that you have three minutes after you tear up the microphone.
Feel me. My name is Julie Fisher. I live at 7276 Northwest Highway. I've lived in Fairview for 59 years, which is longer than most of you have been on this earth, I will might add. Thirty-eight of those years I've lived at 7276 Northwest Highway. Not only does my property adjoin the proposed Northwest Cove subdivision, but it also borders my family's cattle farm. The Woodwick subdivision and the Candlewood Cove LLC, who is the same developer for which you've already approved an R-20, also borders my mother's farm, which will inevitably negatively impact the quality of our pastures with construction and erosion runoff. So as you can see, I have every right to be heard here tonight. I've worked for Williamson County Schools for 24 years and served the students and families of the Fairview Cluster for the last 21 of those 24. As I work with children and families all day, five days a week, I enjoy my privacy and my solitude in the evenings and on the weekends. I've worked hard for my little piece of property, and my home is my sanctuary. The peace and solitude that my little piece of land brings me will forever be gone if you allow this developer and surrounding developers to be rezoned, or development to be rezoned, for anything less than an RS-40. And if you're truly looking out for the citizens of our little neighborhood, building lots should be no larger, no smaller than the RS-40, as all of the existing neighbors' lots exceed that size. If this commission continues to give free rein to the developers to come in and cram as many houses per acre as you will allow them to, in the very near future, there will no longer be the quiet rural community that once drew most of its residents to Fairview. Our children will have to visit state parks to experience a forest and its creatures, for there will no longer be such experiences for them in Fairview. Can any one of you justify for me why my and my neighbor's quality of life should be sacrificed and destroyed so that a developer who doesn't even live in Fairview can make an enormous amount of money and walk away from the chaos and destruction of which he has created? If any of you can justify this, then I suggest that you crawl out of the bed with the developers and start doing what you were put in office to do, and that is to develop our community in a manner that is environmentally responsible, preserves our rural quality of life, and leaves our children the security and beauty that Fairview residents expect and deserve. Thank you.
Leslie Street.
Leslie, if you'll tell us your name and your address, and of course, you have three minutes.
My name is Leslie Street, and I'm at 1062 Highway 96 North. The property, the 20 acres, is also attached to my family farm, and the other side of the 20 acres is also my mom's farm. I said my piece at the last meeting, so I don't have a speech, but I do have questions that I would like answered at some point, however you may deem necessary. I did notice that Mr. Dawson kept saying an RS-20 at the last meeting. Y'all are saying R-20, so I would like to know the difference, because the RS-20 is not even on our zoning map, which I have printed. So please explain the R-20 to us. What are y'all gonna do when the farm animals die, either during or after construction due to the water and runoff? It's not the amount of water that's the concern, it's the chemicals and the stuff in the water. Would you want to drink orange water yourself? Would you want to eat the meat that drank that orange water from the clay dirt, or whatever contaminants that the subdivisions will leave? Everyone talks about the 2040 Plan. When it fits your needs, it's official, but when it doesn't fit your needs, it's not official. So we either need to go with it or not. Also, the school's capacity does not take into account the rooms needed for special needs, therapies, et cetera. So when you look at our schools, and I know we're supposed to have like another elementary school in five years, you have a middle school with three grades, and you have a high school with four grades. You're gonna have another elementary school. Where are they gonna go after elementary school? They gotta go somewhere else. We don't have enough rooms. We're having a hard time with teachers, being able to come to school and teach because of sickness and stuff. We don't have enough subs. So the size of the amount of rooms and how many people they hold is not the problem. The problem is the fact that we don't have special needs for everyone who needs them. We don't have the teachers. We don't have the subs. Heck, we don't even have bus drivers anymore in Williamson County hardly. So just please take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. You'll state your name and your address, and again, you have three minutes.
Okay. I'm Jim McAllister, 7162 Chessington Drive, representing the concerned residents of Castleberry Farm. The current extension of the Ayden Woods section of Castleberry Farms has created outrage since Phase Two of Ayden Woods was cleared of 26 acres of mature forest that had covered it, creating a large nude meadow. We subsequently discovered that the grading permit for the site said that no mature trees were planned for removal. Three weeks ago tomorrow, the stakes became exponentially greater as a large boom excavator motored down the center of Ayden Branch Creek, completely fouling the water downstream while knocking down 100-foot-plus trees that bound the creek on both sides and anchored the creek bank. You have seen those pictures. The demolition crew told us that there would be a bridge across the creek, and the 20-acre forest in Phase Three on the far side from Castleberry would also be completely cleared of old-growth forest. A T-DAC complaint was immediately filed, and a larger uproar began. We discovered that the developer's main business is building houses for rent, including packaging rental-only subdivisions for sale to real estate investment trusts. The developer and absentee owners have strong incentive to maximize the number of units on such sites and minimize the ongoing cost of maintenance, like mowing and leaf removal, so all the trees go. Fairview has conflicting provisions in its subdivision and zoning regulations regarding tree protection, and is not previously policed site development for single-family subdivisions while zealously overseeing commercial, industrial, and multifamily development, which is necessary, because their incentive is to maximize the usable footprint for both buildings and parking at the expense of trees and landscape. In traditional single-family developments, developers know that mature trees are a drawing card to owner-occupant buyers. Simply put, the site development incentives for investor-owned rental subdivisions align exactly with those of a big-box store, a factory or warehouse, or a large apartment complex. We are asking that the board and the planning commission act with all due haste to revise zoning and subdivision development rules to, at a minimum, assure that single-family development with a high percentage of rentals be pulled into the design review manual, which contains stringent guidelines regarding tree removal. Please do not force additional neighborhoods to resist as we have. Thank you.
You'll tell us your name and your address, and you have three minutes.
I'm Ron Buttry, 7506 Lake Road. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. My comments will be short and sweet, to the point. I'm not a business owner, I'm not a contractor or a real estate agent, but my wife and I are homeowners in Fairview. Our greatest concern for Fairview, where I was born and my whole family, is the explosion and the amount of development in the city. It's explosive, and the development of the city. The people make up the city of Fairview, and their wish is to keep it a rural atmosphere we have here. This wish is being trampled on by the planning commission and the city council at y'all. I want to revisit the last meeting, as we have only three minutes to express our concerns. The vice mayor says she had a minimalistic vision for the growth of Fairview, and as I observed, the rest of the board members also agreed with her. If this is so, how does the outrageous growth in our population and the number of new and expanding subdivisions, which are growing like unwanted weeds, fits into this vision you so stated? The very fact that we're here tonight to address rezoning of the land on Northwest Highway, so even more houses can be built, is directly opposite of your vision that you stated. But I got here and I found out not only that one, but there's eight other rezoning requests. More houses, more houses, more houses, more profits for the developers. It seems the developers buy county land, get the city to annex the land so more houses can be built, then get the city to rezone the land so even more homes can be built. Where does this leave the taxpayers of Fairview? Once the developers have packed their bags and gone, who's left holding the bag? When it comes down to street upkeep, sidewalks, storm drainage, police, fire protection, picking up leaves, limbs, and all the city services that's gonna be needed to maintain these subdivisions?
Mr. Buttry.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, but your three minutes are up.
So what if I could just keep going?
Well...
I got one more point to make.
Then I will allow you to make one more point.
At the last meeting, city manager states that we had hired another engineer. Obviously, ours couldn't keep up with the demands for his services. Maybe we should have cut back on his growth, but I wonder how much he's gonna make a year. My wife and I, whose city taxes went up $204 last year. I guess that means we're helping to hold that bag, right? But that's not all we're left with. Many of the new homes are rentals, people with no connection to the values of our way of life in Fairview, which is rural country, okay? No connection to the values of our life. Is it possible we'll be looking at increasing crime, drugs, and don't forget all that cotton-picking litter that we sell over our roads now? That used to not be there. And I don't care how to, too, that will come like a growl of a cancer from the folks that gear, because they'll not understand what we're about. It's common knowledge if people disagree about the growth in Fairview. Why do you not listen to our voice? You, the board of commissioners, have the power to control the outlandish growth we're experiencing by your vote. You have the power to do the will of the people. I ask that you do your part to slow the growth in Fairview. This gentleman, and I ain't got my glasses on, I can't say your name.
Commissioner Dawson. That's Commissioner Dawson.
Dawson. You spoke after the last meeting to me, and you was talking about the 10,000 population thing, about us, the city of Fairview, kinda being under the thumb of the state, remember?
Yes, sir.
About us being, and it allowed us only to levy, I think, a fine of $50 per day per citation. Was that right? Because we was under at that time the 10,000, but now we're over, so we can find more per citation. Did I understand that right?
Mr. Buttry.
I know. I know.
Thank you, sir.
But I wonder this: How many citations at $50 were ever levied upon any of the people? If I may, thank you for this.
You're welcome.
The last one tonight is Mr. Richard Warden.
Hi, Mr. Warden. You have three minutes, and if you'll tell us your name and your address.
Richard Warden, 7256 Northwest Highway. My comment is in the form of a question. When you have your water retention and your silk fences and your dams and all set up, at what point in time does the contractor and the developer, does that leave them and the responsibility comes to the city on maintaining all this?
Mr. Warden, this is a citizen's comments section of the meeting, and so there's not really a back and forth with the people in the board? That's a question that we would love for you to ask later, when we have an opportunity to answer that.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Is that...
That's what I was wanting, and I was wanting to know who's gonna be responsible for that, you know, because, you know, my family foreign, too, and I just need to know. So if there's damage incurred, on who I need to go after?
Yes, sir. I understand that completely. Thank you very much. Ms. Johnson, is that everyone? Thank you so much. Item seven, public announcements, awards, and recognitions. Mr. Ross, I presume that is you.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening. Just to go over some of the city events that we have planned for this year, some of them are not on the list, just because they're in the planning stages. But up first, we have the Easter egg hunt at City Hall on April the 9th. That's gonna start at 10:00 a.m. We're gonna have food trucks here at City Hall, Easter egg hunt, along with the Easter bunny as well. Then, fast forward to June the 4th, 11th, and the 25th, we're gonna have a summer movie series at Bowie Nature Park. And if for some reason one of those dates gets rained out, then we'll reschedule that date. Then July the 2nd is the playground grand opening. That will start in the afternoon, and then that evening, we're gonna have a movie in the park for the kids as well, just to make it a fun full day for them. Have the ribbon cutting ceremony as well. Then July 3rd, we're gonna have the Independence Day celebration here at City Hall. We're still needing some sponsors to come forth. If you'd like to be a sponsor, please come by City Hall and see me. And then October the 8th, we're gonna have the Second Annual Arts and Crafts Fair at Bowie Park. I'll be posting that here in the coming weeks, details on that event, so you can sign up. November the 5th is Pork in the Park. We'll be speaking about that event here in the next coming weeks. Myself and Mayor Rainey will be speaking on that. And then November the 25th through December the 31st, Holiday Wonders at Bowie Park will begin. And then December the 3rd, we'll have the tree lighting event here at City Hall, along with vendor fair. And then we have a little something special for that day, too, which we'll announce at a later date. Then also, December the 10th, we're gonna have a Christmas parade out on Fairview Boulevard, and it will be a nighttime parade. You have any questions?
Any questions?
Very excited about everything that's coming up this year. Thank you for everyone who's been involved.
Thank you, sir. Item eight, staff comments and monthly reports, Parks Operational Plan Committee report.
Thank you, Mayor. So November 16th, 2021, the Park Operational Planning Committee had our first meeting. Since then, we've had eight meetings, and we've been able to meet with the following groups and organizations: the Friends of Bowie Nature Park, the Fairview American Legion, the staff of the city of Fairview, the Park Director of Percy Warner in Beaman Park, the Fairview Historical Society, the Director of Williamson County Parks and Recreation. And we were also able to tour Bowie Nature Park, Veterans Memorial Park, and the Historical Village, and really kinda look under the hood of all those parks. We've created a maintenance recommendation list that we'll provide the Board of Commissioners here shortly. The Park Operational Plan Committee would like to make the following recommendations to the Board of Commissioners. Number one, we would like to fill the Open Park Program Director position with a Park Manager position. We have a job description that we would like to submit to the BOC. We would like to do that, because we would like to relaunch the consistent calendar of programs that we have in the park. We would like to coordinate and recruit volunteers. We would like to open the nature center seven days a week. We would like to assist with the grand opening of the playground with that position. And we would like to include the individual in the development of that park operational plan. The second recommendation is to identify a funding source for the park system. Obviously, we need a long-term solution to provide funding for the park. This will be imperative as we develop and implement the park operational plan. Number three, we would like to make the suggestion to contract with a third-party vendor to develop a comprehensive master park plan for the city of Fairview. We certainly need that subject matter expert to help us make that master plan for the park. I would like to make the recommendation of the BOC to hold a work session to discuss these three recommendations for the Park Operational Plan Committee. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. So is any of that in the form of a motion, or is that just your recommendations, recommendations from this committee?
Recommendations to the committee, and do we need to make a motion to hold a work session? Okay. So we'll just put that on the book.
Any questions, any comments? Hearing none. Planning report. Mr. Collins, are you wearing all the hats again tonight?
Yes, Mayor, I am, and I'll be brief. I know we have a lengthy agenda, but I'll run down each of what we have. We'll start with the planning report. For the month of February, we had 25 building permits. In 22, nine other building permits. Other are accessory structures, things of that nature, not something that's being built, maybe in addition or such. So, next slide. Oh, that was it. So, quick planning report, I apologize. I work part-time in the planning department this month. In addition to the planning report with the engineering report, just as a reminder to the board, I submitted an email to you guys. We have a notice on the city's website that we have created a reporting mechanism for stormwater complaints. The email for that is stormwater@fairviewtn.gov. That's a new website, our new identifying login for us. We're transitioning from fairviewtn.org to fairviewtn.gov. The stormwater email, when someone submits their information on that, that goes to me, both of our staff engineers. We follow up on that, get information back out there. I'll also remind you that at our March 24th BOC meeting, you'll have the second reading of your stormwater ordinance, which is a substantial improvement from where we've been in stormwater management in the past. So we look forward to getting that work complete. Regarding the finance report, just one reminder for you tonight. Our amended budget for this year, the current fiscal year that we're in, will be to you at the March 24 planning, our BOC meeting. That's the amended budget for the current year. As soon as we complete the work on the amended budget, we'll be presenting the formal budget for the new fiscal year that begins July 1. They will mirror each other. We waited a little bit this year on our amended budget, because we had some capital questions and some revenue questions. Now that we've gotten that information back, we're in the process of closing. The month of February, we'll get that closed, get the amended budget to you, and follow up immediately with the new budget year that begins on July 1. The Public Works report, just a reminder to the public that we will start in April with our chipper service. You may recall that there are a couple months out of the year where we do the leaf pickup, and most of the months of the year, we do the chipper service. That schedule is on the city's website. If you go to the city's website, look under the Public Works page, you'll find a link to the city's map of the scheduling for pickup, and the requirements for what can be picked up and how they're stored on-site. So, and we look forward to getting that started. And lastly, under the city manager report, just one quick item for you. Tomorrow, we will receive the first of the playground equipment to be delivered to Bowie Park. We had some equipment that was delivered today to unload some equipment. It is on-site now. Once we start receiving that equipment, it will be set aside just near the footprint of the playground. Some of that will be dropped off tomorrow. In the next 30 days, you'll see that we're removing the sidewalk sections that we needed to remove to get that work done. We'll tape everything off. The contractor and the person who will be responsible for the installation of the playground will be meeting with us soon. We'll step off that footprint, make sure we're there, get that work done, secure that area as best we can, and start preparing for installation. So, that's been a long time coming, but we're glad to have that here, and you'll be able to see a part of that physically, hopefully tomorrow, if you walk through and see there. So, that's all I have for you tonight. Mayor, I'd be glad to answer any questions on any of those or any others, if it's privileged of the board.
Are there any questions or discussion for the city manager?
Mayor, Mr. Collins, have you had any feedback from the state on Highway 100, on the potholes or plans?
We have not. I think they've been so busy answering our calls that they haven't a chance to come out and do the work. We're working on it pretty hard to get that done. We did have a crew come out. I think their concern on 100, they didn't state this to us, but the expression was that I believe they're gonna have to go back and mill that asphalt. As you're aware, there are several sections that have layers where they've just refilled potholes and refilled potholes. Obviously, that's been unsuccessful. Oddly enough, it's primarily in one lane. It's in the northbound lane more than the southbound lane, which kinda confused them just a little. But I believe they're gonna go back and mill that lane and make those repairs permanent, rather than just fill the potholes. So, hopefully they get to that pretty quickly, but we have been in contact with them.
And for those of us who think that 100 runs east and west, that would be the eastbound lanes, correct? We always get confused about that.
As I have stated on multiple occasions, I ain't from around here. So, to me, it's north, but I understand how...
The state says it's east and west.
I'm from Alabama. It don't really matter which direction.
That could be the problem. If you're saying the northbound lanes of 100 are bad, they're still looking for that. Just my thought.
For members of the public, if you're traveling toward Nashville, that would be the lane that we're working to get repaired. So, I apologize for...
Thank you, sir.
Sure, thank you.
Item nine, consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye. Item 10, old business, rezoning of Old Nashville Road. We will open the public hearing for anyone that wants to speak on that item.
Mayor, I'm gonna accuse myself from A through C.
Okay. Thank you, sir. So the public hearing is now open. If anyone wants to speak to the Old Nashville Highway rezoning, just walk up to the podium and tell us your name and your address. and tell us your name and your address.
Madam Mayor and Commissioners, I'm Joe Scott. I'm at 7123 Fernvale Springs Way. And two years ago, I moved here from Franklin because Franklin was overcrowded. I did some work, talked to 81 people about the rezoning of the three, approximately seven-acre plots on Old Nashville Road. Out of those 81 contacts, 74 were opposed, and opposed enough to where they signed the petition saying they did not want it rezoned from RS40 to R20. There were five no comment, and two related to the developer. So, basically unanimous opposition to that rezoning. And I don't know if you have talked to 84 people about that particular rezoning, or 81, but I have, and there's no support for it. Okay, what are some of the concerns? The drainage. Old Nashville already floods in heavy rains, and I sent pictures to you in an email a couple of days ago. The water runs on the shoulders, and it drains into a creek that goes behind the apartments on Old Nashville Road, and also behind two of the buildings in Fernvale Springs. Road congestion. Lot of concern on all the people that I talked to about that particular road. It's a country road. It's in bad shape. It's narrow. It doesn't have a yellow line in the middle. And we're going to add RS, R20, as I understand it, allows for half-acre lots instead of one-acre lots. 2.2 units per acre as opposed to 1.1. And according to the definition of R20 in your codes, that says that it can be one-family dwelling or two-family dwellings. So it could be duplexes. And I don't know what the developers' plans are, but if you do the math, if you've got 21 acres, and you multiply that by two because you cut it in half to half acres, that's 40, 42. And if you put two-family dwellings on there, that's as many as 84 families in that lot, 21 acres. So that's going to be a lot of roofs. It's going to be a lot of parking space. It's going to be a lot of driveways. It's going to be a lot of runoff. That creek that runs behind our buildings in Fernvale Springs and runs right by those apartments on Old Nashville Road and Old Nashville Court, that's going to increase the possibility of flooding. So one of the questions that I got asked a lot was, are you going to widen that road? Are you going to put some sort of drainage in? How's that going to happen? And when you, there's already two major divisions, subdivisions already built out on that road, Otter Creek and Pennant Place. And right up the road from these three lots, there's another sign out there for, I think it's something chestnut, something construction. So it looks like that's going to be subdivided. So how many people are we going to put on this road? Some of the other concerns were, there was a question, and I don't know the answer. I don't think, according to the documentation that I read, that there would be public housing or apartments. I hope that's not the case. The other thing that I heard consistently is probably this is going to cause our taxes to go up. I lived in Franklin for a lot of years, and I saw the taxes go up and up and up as the city got bigger and bigger and bigger. They had to build more schools. They had to build more sewer services. They had to put in pipes. There was one period for a year and a half where my water bill went up significantly three times in a year and a half to support all that development. And I called the water department, asked them why it was going up, and they said, "Oh, we've got to pay for all those pipes and all that digging and all that stuff that we've got to put in for all that development." So I would like for you to take the long view. The long view is what's going to happen to this rural community, this beautiful picturesque rural community? Are we going to be the next Spring Hill? Are we going to be the next Franklin? I left Franklin because the traffic there is terrible. It's a mess. We came out here because it is peaceful. It is quiet. It is rural. You can see, and when I go for a jog, I jog nearly every day, and I go by donkeys, horses, cows, goats, chickens. Where are they going to be? It's going to be wall-to-wall people. You're going to have more crimes. You're going to have to have a bigger jail. You're going to have to have more schools. You're going to have to build, what's the deal with the water hookups and the sewer? For a while, there was a temporary stay on that because Dixon Water Authority couldn't handle it anymore. Where is that going? Are we going to have to build our own sewer system? I'm absolutely convinced, as are these 74 people who signed this document in opposition to this rezoning, that at some point, our taxes are going to go up and up. And if you camouflage that like Franklin did and hide it by jacking the water rates up three times, that's still taxing the existing residents of this community to pay for lining the pockets of a bunch of developers, some of which, as we have heard, don't even live in this community. At least this developer, in this particular case, lives in this community. But I couldn't find anybody who supported his idea of doubling and possibly quadrupling the impact, the number of families that would be on this property. I have been told that there are those of you on this board that question the wisdom of turning Pennant Place into R15, quarter-acre lots. Those houses, I go by there almost every day. Those houses are really close together. And some of the neighbors that have lived there for years, now this development's in their backyard. And if we put up to 84 residences on this property, it's going to be even higher density than Pennant Place. So if you don't like Pennant Place, this development on Old Nashville Road, those 21 acres are going to be even worse. So, I appreciate your service. I know sometimes it's a thankless job to be in a position where you're having to make decisions. I really do appreciate your service. I know you're in a difficult place. I know that you have to weigh different considerations. But I hope you will pay attention to the numbers. 74 people took the time to sign this. I work full-time. I'll be 75 next month. I work full-time, and yet I took the time to go out and knock on these doors, and I had to help from three other people. So, these folks are concerned about the core nature of our community. They see it as a peaceful and picturesque small town and changing it into an overcrowded city that will induce urban problems associated with high density. They don't want higher taxes. They don't want school overcrowding. What's going to happen to our schools until sometime in the future, you have some huge capital expense to build more school buildings? What's going to happen in the meantime? The quality of our education is going to suffer because we pull all these families in with all these kids, and they're going to pack to school. So they're concerned about that. What about increased crime? Increased noise and pollution, drainage issues, all of these things, traffic congestion? It's, I heard it over and over and over. I wish you could have been with me talking to some of these folks. They are passionate about it. I'd welcome with open arms, "Thank you, sir, for coming out and talking to us. Yes, I'd be delighted to sign your petition." Bottom line, the people have spoken, at least that I have heard, and they all don't want it. Only two abstained entirely because they're related to the developer, and then there were five that had no comment. So draw your own conclusions. I appreciate your time. I appreciate your service, and thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that wants to speak on this matter? Yes, sir. If you'll tell us your name and your address.
Yes, my name is Dan Carnahan. I live at 7424 Old Nashville Road. Number one, like the gentleman just said, I do appreciate, this is not an easy job you guys have. So I do appreciate you guys having, take the time to listen to all the concerns and frustrations that you hear a lot of people having this. So I want to thank you for listening to us tonight.
Thank you.
Like the other gentleman said, I live real close to where they're going to have the development here. And a couple of things, I got this certified letter in February. I wasn't aware of this until February. So this is under the business of old news. This is the first I'm hearing about it in the first, in the middle of February. And this is the first time I've actually been able to come here. So I think that process needs to be better. So, especially since I'm impacted, highly impacted, areas that are like that, they need to be certified letters sent out earlier. Because I'm assuming, based off old news, this was discussed before. Right? So, the second thing, like the other gentleman, I've lived out there since 95, so I've seen a lot of stuff that happened. That road was paved in 93. It's almost going to be 30 years. So, that's the other concern I have with any type of development we do, whether it be single-family per acre or two families per acre, half-acre, is that road needs to be maintained. I don't know what the justification is to getting a road maintained, but I think 30 years is a way too long for that. There used to be a, the double yellow line in the center. That's been gone for almost 15 years. So people are counting on being able to judge where you are at in the road versus the other person on the road to get by each other. Like the gentleman said too, is I have lived through the Fairview, and it used to have its own watering source. I know the state came in and said, "Hey, you can't develop anymore. You're over capacity." And so, we signed up with Dixon, but Dixon said, "You're not getting unlimited lines." So where all these lines coming from that we have access to now? My understanding is when we signed up with Dixon, we didn't have unlimited lines coming into Fairview from Dixon Water and Sewer. So that's the other question I have that I think we need answered. The other question I have too is, you know, I don't, I don't, and I don't think anyone's mind having, making progress. Change happens, you know? Whether we like it or not, it's going to happen. But I think what we need to do is have a discussion on how we want to make this change. You know, with Mr. Magrum here, the thing is, we want to do an R20, but I need details. What's that mean? You know, is that going to be, how many houses is that going to be? I don't know if that was discussed last time, but I think we need to have a deeper dive into when we want to rezone something, and someone says, "Yes, I want to come in and build under this new R20." What does that mean? I have no idea. Right? So I think, I think there should be more detail before we make a decision like that as well. And the other question I have, the concerns, ordinances with the, what, how long is, if you do build, what are the building hours? You know, I live out here because of the peace and quiet. You know, are there normal building hours? Is it going to be like from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., you know, which is not, not something I would like to see? You know, so even if we do something like this, what are the, what are the building hours, you know? And can we set those to something that doesn't disturb our peace throughout the day? You know, I'm blessed enough that I can work from home. You know, now that's going to interrupt all that too as well. You know? So those are the, another concern that I have as well with that. And the last thing that I have, the gentleman also mentioned, is the drainage is terrible. Part of the road development there, there used to be a drainage by my, right down off my road, underneath my driveway, that went down and went to where those new places are to the right. That hasn't, that hasn't worked in 15 years. I asked the Fairview over the years, are they going to address it? But I heard nothing about it. So again, we need to build, put more money into our infrastructure as opposed to building new houses, in my opinion. So, again, I thank you for your time. I know it's a hard job, but I, like I said, I partly signed that petition. I'm against the rezoning. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is April, April Drennan, and I live at 7512 Old Nashville Road. This is my first time, like, attending a public hearing.
We're glad you're here.
Thank you. Yeah. So I, so how does this work? Can I ask you a question and you'll answer, or you'll say, "I'm not going to answer that," or you won't answer at all? Do I need a call to get answers? Okay. No, I, no, I'm not trying to be facetious. I promise.
I know, I know. This is, yes, it's not, it's not a back and forth.
It's not something where you'll say back and forth, like yes or no. So I can't ask why he was, he recused himself? There's no questions? Okay.
I think he's, did he state?
No, he just said, "I need to recuse myself from these items." Okay, just wondering. Now, truly, I'm not trying to be a smart aleck.
I know, I know.
I really am.
I understand.
Because I don't, I've never been to one of these before. And I will say that I talked to a Ms. Rachel Jones, she was very nice and very informative. I think I talked to her. You guys are giving me a look like I might not have talked to her. I talked to somebody that I called, and it was very, she was very nice and informative because.
We're glad to hear that.
I too did not know, when I saw that yellow sign on the road, what, because I called and I was like, "What's that there for?" And she told me that it was, you know, rezoning from RS40 to R20. And even though I work in private wealth and I work in real estate some, I don't know what that means. So I asked her, and she was very informative that that, you know, that that means it goes from one acre, 1.1 structure per acre to 2.2 or two structures an acre. You can't, yeah. So, so I guess that's one comment I want to make. It's like, it would have been nice if this notice had said what that actually means. I guess Google exists, so I understand that. But, so, one other thing that I see is that it is proposed, the rezoning of the site should be subject to all City of Fairview ordinances and regulations. And I guess I can call and ask about how mu, like, what that means? Like, is there, is there periodic inspections of the ordinances? Or is it, you know, if you get like code violations, if people call in code violations or something like that, if we, but we have to know what the code is. We have to know what the ordinance is for, to know if it's violated. And I also just, you know, I moved here in 2019 for my family of three, husband, wife, and son, for Williamson County Schools, number one. And number two, for some rural. My husband and I grew up in a small town in Kentucky. We moved to the big city of Nashville and established our careers. And then we decided after we had a kid, "Ooh, we don't want to be in Donaldson anymore. We want to move to," you know, and I was like, "Fairview's in Williamson County. That's awesome." And we love Fairview, and we've loved it ever since. But I have seen the astronomical growth. And we decided not to, not that I'm holding against anybody to buy a subdivision house. We decided not to be in a subdivision house for many reasons, one of which my husband would 100% violate the HOA within seconds, but also because, you know, we wanted to buy an old established house, and that's what we got. And so, and we love that we have a field that's right behind us that has hay, and we love it. And our son loves to watch the hay and the tractors and everything. And then we love that the people, the people across the street from us just has a bunch of, you know, it's a bunch of just vacant land, and it's wooded, and there's, it's just beautiful. And then, so of course, you know, a little thorn in our side when we get that little yellow sign on there. So, and then I just don't, I have the same concerns that the other two's voice, so I'm not going to reiterate all of that. I signed the petition that I was against the rezoning. I'm not against the current plan. We have somebody that's across the street from us that built a beautiful home on that, on the one, the other, like, the one at the end. And the zoning of, you know, one structure per acre, it's the zoning. And I just, I guess I just don't understand the zoning of, you know, to make it smaller because I just feel like that's not what Fairview wants. And I think you've seen that that's not really what the neighbors of Fairview want. But I also, you know, and I was going to ask the question, if, if innovative construction is allowed to come to these meetings, I'm assuming they are because it's a public hearing, but, you know, so I just, I don't know if they speak or if they, you know, if that would be a conflict of interest for them to speak or them to address the public or whatever. But also, it would be nice if we got some explanation of what's planned and what their plans are, and how they're going to try to think of things that, to make this awesome and make this better for the community and for all the reasons, and, and how to deal with all the reasons that the other with all the reasons that the other two gentlemen before me have spoken about. But thank you for your time, and maybe you'll see me again.
Thank you. Do I need to repeat the drill? Okay.
I've got it by now. Good evening. Sean Keaton, 7200 Jones Lane. The first gentleman, I think he covered most of the points that I was going to bring up. The only thing I'm going to reiterate is what I brought up at the first reading. And that is, if we look at the 2040 Plan, there are, this property has two designations on it. And the top, basically the top north of this property is in a tran, is what's called a transition corridor. And the 2040 Plan says for this corridor, the only appropriate zoning is RS-40. So again, I don't know how you mix and match on this. Thank you. Sorry.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Rita Flynn. I'm almost afraid to tell you where I live.
You're going to have to speak into the microphone so we can hear you.
Can you hear me now?
We can.
My name is Rita Flynn. I live at 7186 Winfrey Drive in Otter Creek. I'm sorry. When we moved there, I didn't know there were going to be 169 houses built. We moved here from Maryland, which is close to DC and very congested. And our daughter lives in Brentwood, which is, every time we drive there, we thank God we live in Fairview. And I'm, I'm new. Obviously, I'm new to the town, but I'm new to all this. And if you can't answer a question, I'm going to state it, and maybe somebody here will tell me that I'm not right. The second and final reading of an ordinance, does that mean at the end of all these discussions, it gets voted on?
Yes, that is the next item on the agenda.
Okay. So if you're hearing all these people opposed, and I, everybody said exactly what I feel, then to vote on this, I mean, you don't table it to have more discussion or to have, to educate the people on really what's going to be involved? Is there, does that happen?
This, we cannot, this is not a back and forth conversation.
Does anybody know what I'm asking here? Can I talk to them? Okay, so then what I'm going to say, excuse me for one minute, I'm going to turn my back on you since I can talk to them and not you. We, these people are elected officials. If they are not going to hear our voices and our concerns about where we live, they need to be voted out.
Mayor. Mayor.
Mr. Potter.
Mayor, I, mayor, at this point, I'm going to request that you just, yes, please.
Okay. Not surprised.
Understood. So, mayor.
Is there anyone else to speak on this item? Yes, sir.
My name is Beau Maxwell. I live directly across the street, 7508 Old Nashville Road. First, I want to thank Joe for all your efforts, because we need more people like that, usually around here. Because I got, I got the same thing. I got a certified letter, you know, didn't, didn't get a chance to come to the first meeting. And thankfully, he, he did his due diligence and got us, a lot of us down here, I think. So thank you. I just wanted to voice my concerns against it. There is a lot of flooding there. There's a new, excuse me, there's a new, that new apartment building that's just on, it's just down the road, just E, just west of where the proposed zoning change is. And they have major flooding issues in that, I believe it's the same developer, I might be mistaken, but they have a lot of flooding issues in that apartment, in their, in their parking lot, and then from across the street, it gets full, full with water there. And they've had a lot of issues there with that developer. Again, I don't know if it's the same one, but I'm not against change, and I'm not against building in there. It's going to happen, you can't stop it. But to have the amount that they're proposing, it's ridiculous. And the poor family that built that beautiful house, I mean, that's fine, it's going to happen. But let's have some restrictions and slow it down a little bit, maybe a little less people, that's all. It's going to change. Let's think about it and slow it down. Hopefully, hopefully you all have not made up your minds, because like she said, I think we'll be coming out in droves voting. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else to speak on this item? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. So, O Business, item A2, second and final reading of ordinance 2022-03, Vice Mayor.
Second and final reading, ordinance 2022-03, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the City of Fairview, Tennessee by rezoning 6.99 acres of property consisting of Williamson County Tax Map 042, parcel 063.03, located on Old Nashville Road from RS-40 residential single family to R-20 residential. Property owner, Timothy Mangram, Innovative Construction Company, LLC. Move for approval.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. It's amazing how you just appear before I even see if you're here. So, Mr. Mangram, you have heard the concerns. I made a list.
I have, and you may have to remind me of some of those, because I would be, I would like to speak on as many of them as I can.
Let's start with drainage.
Well, first, let me, let me say one thing. Thanks about the Christmas parade. I'm excited to see that back, coming back. So, go ahead. So drainage. I did hear the concerns, and I heard the apartments on Old Nashville mentioned multiple times. I own those apartments. Those apartments do not flood. Do? Let me finish, please.
Mayor, let me, I'm going to remind everyone in the room that if we're going to have an outburst, we're going to remove anyone in the room as an outburst. That includes the speaker addressing the board. We're going to handle this as a business meeting professionally. If it can't be done, we'll remove the members who can't conduct themselves the same.
Is that understood?
So, we, we do get runoff water at those apartments. They do not flood the apartments. Now, the runoff water, it does cross Old Nashville Road coming from the farm that is across from the apartments. There's about 80 acres of that place, and about 50 or 60 of it drains to that area, including three of the people that got up here and spoke that live on Old Nashville, their water also flows down to those apartments. There's a culvert that comes under the road there and does flow through the apartment So, and as far as the drainage on Old Nashville, so these three parcels that I'm trying to rezon, there are about 550 feet of road frontage on Old Nashville. We will be putting, if we develop this as R-20, we will be putting curb and gutter on that 500 and somewhat feet of road, which would help us take some of the drainage that's currently flowing down Old Nashville Road and run it through our development and take it to the natural drainage way that eventually goes under Highway 100.
You ready, you ready for the next one now?
Yes, ma'am.
Road congestion.
Well, I think we can all agree, there's, there's definitely road congestion in Fairview and numerous places, on a lot of roads that, and I do believe the city is actively working on some capital expenditure projects on paving some roads, which are definitely needed. And also, on each one of y'all's desks, you've probably seen it when you got here, I laid on top of there a little sketch plan that I had the engineer do in a sort of timely manner to try to get it to this meeting tonight. I think it shows 24 half-acre lots. And the part of the parcel that's closest to Highway 100 is still approximately about three acres, that we're not showing any lots on at all currently. If we do anything with that, they will be larger lots, and they will not impact Old Nashville Road. They'll, we're going to try to get direct access to Highway 100 for maybe one or two, one or two acre lots on that. So we're only looking at 24 lots to impact Old Nashville Road. And contrary to some of the belief, they're not duplexes, they're single-family homes.
Okay. So 24 units, non-duplexes.
That's what's on that sketch, and that's, that's going to be extremely close. Of course, it's sketch, they've got to do a lot of other stuff per the city requirements to, for a site plan, but that's going to be extremely close.
So 24 houses, not duplexes, single-family housing.
That is correct. 24 houses.
And your work hours? I understand that that's a concern.
Yeah, and I think the city has an ordinance in place currently. Mr. Collins can probably correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's 7:00 a.m. in the morning to 10 o'clock at night, or 9:00 o'clock at night. I may be slightly wrong, but that's, that's going to be real close, because I've asked that question on some things before.
Okay. That's all my list.
And I would like to say some, a couple of things. So I did hear Mr. Scott's concerns, and I did reach out to a few of these people that signed the petition, because I did do an open record request. I spoke to five. Four of the five signed the petition solely because they heard the word duplex, and they heard 80 duplexes. That was their concern. One of them was concerned about traffic. He said we, he wished we had a red light at Ferneville Road and Highway 100. But four of the five that I spoke to, the word 80 duplexes is what spooked them, and the reason they signed that, is what they told me. The donkeys, horses, and cows that he likes to see, they will still be there because they are mine. So they will be there whether this is approved or not. Some of the other concerns that I did see in the petition or was increased crime. That was one of the concerns. With 24 homes that we believe will start at $700,000 when completed, we don't see that R-20 zonings increase the crime rate. As we know from city documents, our majority of our 911 calls are in high-density areas, not in the lower-density areas. We feel like, also with R-20 zoning, some of our most desired neighborhoods in the city of Fairview, Castleberry Farms, McCormick Grove, they are R-20 zoning as well, which is two of our most desired neighborhoods in, in Fairview currently. Also heard fire station. I think that was in, maybe the email. I do believe the city is actively working on a plan for a potential new fire station, which is great news for the city. And of course, I did hear sewer and water capacity. I do believe that the Water Authority of Dixon County is currently working on a plan to increase our sewer capacity for the city of Fairview. But to me, I live in Fairview, I've been here 49 years, born and raised here, my dad was born and raised here. Change is hard. There's things I don't like, but I have to live with it. It's exciting times. So Walmarts, the Publix, that most of us in this room shop at, they didn't, they didn't come here for Fairview to stay. 7,000 people. We all know that. And in order to get more of those amenities, where we can shop and eat and, and spend our money in our city opposed to spending our money in Franklin, Brentwood, Nashville, Dixon to go and eat and shop, the more rooftops we have here, the more of those kind of amenities we will get.
Are you?
Any more questions?
Is there any questions from the board?
I've got a question for Mr. Collins. Does this ordinance, as it stands, meet the 2040 comprehensive plan?
Commissioner Dawson, I believe it does with the exception of the, the component of the transition, where there is a section of the 2040 Plan that lists that as a transition. And I apologize, I don't have that definition of the comprehensive plan in front of me. But substantially, it does meet the comprehensive plan with the exception of that, that question for a portion of this property.
Just offhand, you don't know what portion that is?
No, I apologize, sir. I'd have to take a break and go pull the plan and pull that specific language. I just don't have that information with me. I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'm 99% sure that's the 100, Highway 100 side of this property, which we're showing on that plan. I don't know if there's a way, y'all can project that up on the screen so everybody here can see it or not, with what I shared with y'all. I have more, a few more copies of it with me. I don't know if there's a way to project that up there, if that's even, if this is even the time or place to do that, but.
Are there more questions from the board for Mr. Mangram?
I have one, mayor. So, refresh my memory on this, Mr. Mangram. Is this the, because I noticed you're A, B, and C. So this is the property that I believe that the planning commission, and I may be wrong, this was the one that kind of, we had a set, they sectioned it out. I couldn't be at that meeting, I watched it on YouTube, but they sectioned it out, and it got a little muddy because, was that the same, was that the same property?
No, that, that's another item coming up later. This one here, I believe was unanimous at the planning commission.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, because I was.
Can I address one more thing?
Yeah.
I did hear one more comment. The comment was asked, why one of our commissioners recused himself? That commissioner has no interest in this property whatsoever. He represents a builder who would like to buy some lots if this development's approved. So with that said, he thought it'd be best for him to recuse himself, even though he does not have any interest in this property. He just felt that was being above board and doing his duty.
Commissioner Lucas, I think you're talking about the Highway 96 property across from T-Dot.
Correct, correct.
Are there any more questions of Mr. Mangram? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Ms. Johnson, will you call the roll, please?
Vice Mayor Anderson. Aye. Mr. Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. O Business B, rezoning Old Nashville Road. We will now open the public hearing for that piece of property. Is there anyone that would like to speak on that? Ms. Johnson, it is freezing cold in this building.
Sean Keaton, 7200 Jones Lane. Question was, how much of this property is in the transition corridor? It is the top north half of it. Half of this property is in the transition corridor, all three of these. And it says it should only be zoned RS-40. Are we using the 2040 Plan or not?
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item?
April Drennan, 7512 Old Nashville Road. Thank you for your comments, Mr. Mangram. I did want to make, I forgot, after I got back to my chair, a comment about the widening of Old Nashville Road that needs to happen. I think I heard him say that there isn't going to be structures that are fronting Old Nashville Road that are going to be right on the road. I think it's necessary to widen Old Nashville Road just twice. Or just since I've been living here, I've had construction vehicles knock over my mailbox not once, but twice. And I know they got to get somewhere, but when they meet somebody, my mailbox just, you know, is collateral damage. So, just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone?
So Scott, the drainage, I'm not convinced. So he's going to put a gutter along the frontage, okay? We're going to put 24 houses in there with the roofs and the parking and the dry, and the, and the road. So that's going to be a lot more runoff. And all of that is going to go downhill towards where those apartments are and towards where the buildings that we live in and, in the subdivision that we're in. So actually, that gutter is just going to carry more water down there. And so I'm, I'm not sure we really have a plan here for dealing with all that water. It's not going to go underground, it's not going to be diverted in any way, it's just going to come faster, and it's not going to sink into the ground that's there, okay? And so we're going to have 24 houses. And so we're going to have 24 houses on half the space because half of it's, uh, the transition. So i- if half of it's transition, that cuts it down from 21 acres to, uh, 10 and a half acres. So we could have 10 and a half hour, uh, houses in there, but just, you just approved to have 24 houses in there. And that's what he said. But did you hear him when he said now? He said, that's what's on my plan now. Well, what's it's going to be on his plan tomorrow? 30 houses or 40 houses or how many houses? Okay? I'm not convinced that we were heard. Apparently, all of these people that got up and talked about their concerns about the rural nature of our community are not being listened to. They're just not being heard. So I hope in the future and in, in other hearings about rezoning, you will take into consideration the nature of this community, which is a rural picturesque community. It's the exception. Nobody wants to be Spring Hill Junior. And that's what you are continually approving. And we're going to continue to approve it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hello? Dan Carnhand, 7424 Old Nashville Road. Uh, I guess each of these is, so the, the last one we just talked about is, he said, was it 30 houses? Is this another 30 houses coming in for this zone? For this, for this particular zoning hearing, for this property? I, I, I'd like to, again, more details is, what are we talking about total for all three properties? You know, um, I'm not hearing that clearly in my mind. It's not making sense in my mind. To the, uh, young lady, I'd like to thank you. Uh, yes, my mailbox, I've replaced it three times where I live. Because people, it, the wa, road isn't wide enough there. And you add more traffic to it, guess what? I'm probably have to replace another three times in 25 years. Something's got to be done about that for, 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 uh, Old Nashville Road. And the drainage is an issue. I can tell you, now, now, if you get a sprinkle out there, no, it doesn't, a lake doesn't form, because I am the end house there. And then you have the field off to the, to the left of me, uh, where I'm at. There's, I don't have a house to the right of me. So, um, when I see, uh, rain, i- if it's a quarter inch or more, a half inch more that comes, there's a lake there, down there. And I think that's what we have concern with, is that that drainage for coming in, what is it, 30, 100 houses coming in? Where's that all going? So, uh, that's the other thing, I think, again, I, you know, the devil's in the details, right? I, I'm not hearing the details that, that, that we need to say. Because I'm not against change per se, but I just don't have a warm and fuzzy on what's going to occur with this. So, I, I, I don't know if we can table this and get those types of, uh, details at this point. That's what I'd like to see happen. You know, I'd be, I'd come up here on a Saturday, I'd sit five, six hours with people and it, if we get the details, right? I think a lot of us would at this point. So appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else to speak on 10B? Okay, then we will close the public hearing on item 10B. 10B two, second and final reading of ordinance 2022 dash zero four, Vice Mayor.
Second and final reading, ordinance 2022 dash zero four, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Fairview, Tennessee by rezoning 7.19 acres of property consisting of Williamson County Tax Map 042, parcel 063.04, located on Old Nashville Road, from RS 40 residential single family to R 20 residential. Property owner Timothy Mangram, Innovated Construction Company LLC. Move for approval.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion, Mr. Mangram?
I will clarify one comment I just heard. So the, the little sketch plan you have there in front of you with the 24 lots on it, that is all three tracks combined. It, it's not 24 per each one of these seven acre lots. It's, that's the three combined that you have in front of you.
Are you, do you need to put a, will you put a storm drain in there too? Or is it just?
I'm 99% sure that's a city requirement and a detention pond. You can see the detention pond on the plan too, at the very back, because the property does fall to the, to the very back. So we do feel like we will be capturing a substantial amount of water that's currently flowing down Old Nashville, because there's no ditch on this side of Old Nashville. Uh, it just flows down this shoulder of the road. So when we put that curb and gutter in, there has to be a storm drain in that curb and gutter.
And what is the total acreage of those three lots?
Twen, a little over twen, uh, a little over 21 and a half.
So 21 and a half acres?
Yes, ma'am.
And 24 house, four, 24 units?
That will impact Old Nashville. Like I said, we, we've got a track still on 100 that we will either put one or two larger estate-style lots on.
Okay.
But it'll ac, it'll access 100 not to Old Nashville. So we've got about two acres, um, where there's heavily tree there towards 100, that will be, be left natural.
And how, I'm sorry, how many acres did you say that is?
It's roughly two.
Okay. Are there any more questions for Mr. Mangram? Hearing none, Ms. Johnson, will you call the roll, please?
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
Aye.
Thank you.
You might as well just stay right there. You're young. Item C, rezoning Old Nashville Road, number one, public hearing. Is there anyone to speak on item C? Which is the third piece of property.
Uh, Dan Carnhand, 7424 Old Nashville Road. Uh, one other thing, I, I've lived out there, I said, for, uh, since 95, and I had, uh, I had a four-inch concrete slab, uh, put on for my driveway. It's four inches. Not until this year, when we had all the other development, we had huge trucks coming by with the brick loads that they have on them, did that, that, did my bottom of my driveway crack? That's not from a car, that's from a heavy load coming on, because it's a four-inch, four-inch thick concrete on that, on cement, on that, on my driveway. The only way that could happen is a load. And I'm concerned about that as we have other development, uh, like this coming in, is that impacting my driveways anymore? So, um, that was the one thing I wanted to add. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that wants to speak?
Is the city planning to widen that road and repave it and put a yellow stripe in the middle? Currently, it's too narrow. We're going to add more traffic and we're going to have, like that gentleman said, a bunch of heavy construction, um, including, uh, cement trucks and semi-trucks with, uh, heavy, uh, heavy loads of lumber on them. I sent you pictures of a section of that road right across from where this development's going to be. There's extensive gatering of the pavement. There's cracks both horizontal and re, and, uh, and vertical, uh, up and down that road. And as it has been mentioned, uh, at the lowest point below this development going down that hill and coming from the opposite direction at the corner of, uh, Fernvale Road and, uh, Old Nashville Road, that's downhill. So you've got two downhills. And where they meet, in one of the pictures I sent you, there's flooding that's over half the road. So traffic during the day on that road has to go over to one lane and even there, they're going to be driving in water. And we're going to put 24 more houses on this road? Are we going to repave it? Are we going to widen it? Are we going to make it suitable for the mega-city that you're developing to replace the beautiful country, uh, town that we used to have? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else to speak on this item?
Just want to say one more thing, Old Maxwell, it's a block away, Old Nashville Road. I want to clarify what I meant by the flooding of that apart, the apartments right toward Jo, um, sorry, Fernvale Road. I didn't mean the apartments flooded, that whole parking lot in there was flooded. Seen it more than once, so I just wanted to clarify that. And the other thing I wanted to say is, it seems apparent that these decisions have already been made and this is just more of a formality. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else to speak on this? Yes, Mayor?
Hi, I'm Gemma Thompson, 7267 Northwest Highway. I'm very new to these proceedings and out of just clarification about the 2040 plan for Fairview, I pulled up the, or downloaded the map. And this is just what I did in my chair right now. Um, and it, it says that it's supposed to be RS 40. It seems pretty clear to me. I completely agree with the fact that like, maybe there isn't a decision that can be made right now and that should, this should be shelved until we can have further understanding of what the clarification for the 2040 plan is and how this reflects that. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak on this item? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing for item 10C. Item C two, second and final reading of ordinance 2022 dash zero five, Vice Mayor.
Second and final reading, ordinance 2022 dash zero five, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Fairview, Tennessee by rezoning 7.19 acres of property consisting of Williamson County Tax Map 042, parcel 063.06, located on Old Nashville Road, from RS 40 residential single family to R 20 residential. Property owner Timothy Mangram, Innovated Construction Company LLC. Move for approval.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Mr. Mangram, any questions from the board? Hearing none. Then Ms. Johnson, if you will call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. O Business, item D, rezoning Cleveland Lane. We will open the public hearing for the Cleveland Lane property.
Name's Leslie Street, 1062 Highway 96 North. As we've been talking about for the last few meetings, the 2040 plan, are y'all going with it or not with it? This is commercial at Cleveland Lane and 96. I'm assuming that was, um, up for auction or the bank took it or whatever, but why is it commercial right there? Is 96 not supposed to be residential? And the commercial more towards the interstate? Just want to know clarification if we're going to go with the 2040 or not.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak on this item? Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing on item D, the rezoning of Cleveland Lane. D two, second and final reading of ordinance 2022 dash zero six, Vice Mayor.
Second and final reading, ordinance 2022 dash zero six, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Fairview, Tennessee by rezoning 0.31 acres of property consisting of Williamson Tax Map, Williamson County Tax Map 022, parcel 145.04, located on Cleveland Lane, from RS 15 residential single family to C dash one commercial. Property owner, First Federal Bank, applicant Timothy Mangram, Innovated Construction Company LLC, and David Hudgens. Move for approval.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor? Yes, sir. Do we have questions for Mr. Mangram from the board?
I did send, um, an email to Ms. Johnson today, uh, to try to keep this looking more like a residential building. It's, um, this is a rendering, this is not, I haven't had the plans drawn yet. We would like to make it as close as possible to this, except for the front of the building will be close to 96. The parking would be in the rear of the building where you would not see very little of the parking from Highway 96. But we feel like that residential look of that commercial structure would fit in good with that corridor. It, it's an, it'll be an office building for two tenants.
Are there any questions from the board for the developer?
Mayor, if I may, I just read a couple of notes from, uh, the planning commission. I mean, there's a few things discussed on it. The parcel adjoins next to a commercial center, future zoning use from the 2040 plan, so it adjoins a commercial use. Two parcels to the north is the multifamily, uh, I believe it's an RM eight or RM 12 apartment complex. And then just three parcels to the south is commercial area. And so the discussion there was, it kind of is in the, in a commercial area, high-density area right now, it would kind of conform to the zoning use there in the area. Those are the notes I have.
Okay. And how far is that from the T-Dot garage?
Uh, it's probably a half a mile. It's right on the corner, of course, of Cleveland Lane and Highway ninety, uh, Highway 96 directly across from Clemens Lake Apartments.
Are there any more questions from the board, any more, any other comments from the board? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Ms. Johnson, if you will call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item E, second and final reading of ordinance 2022 dash zero seven, Vice Mayor.
Second and final reading of ordinance 2022 dash zero seven, an ordinance to amend city of Fairview ordinance 667, track two, upon rezoning from RS 15 to any commercial zoning classification.
Mr. Collins, would you like to explain to us what that is?
Yes, Mayor, members of the commission, this, this parcel, when it was, uh, zoned residential as a part of the Leverett Meadow subdivision, um, was deemed a not, not a buildable lot. That was the language that was included, um, with the ordinance that rezoned that property residential. Specific reason for that was it was, um, square footage-wise, just shy of the square footage necessary to be used as a building lot for RS 15. The, this ordinance simply removes that language or the term non-buildable lot for so long as this property shall be commercial. If at any time it is zoned anything other than commercial, it will revert back to the non-buildable lot status pursuant to ordinance 667.
Thank you, sir.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion or any further questions?
Got one question, um, from Mr. Collins. And this states any zoning classification, uh, for commercial, is that correct? So we're not saying C one, C two, it's just open?
It, it states that it would be, be classified as a non-buildable lot if it ever becomes anything other than commercial zoning. Given that, um, it was deemed non-buildable specific to the RS 15 residential, we believe that governs. However, if it's going to be commercial, even if it were to be zoned another commercial, the lot size doesn't increase. Therefore, we, we carried that over with commercial, um, but only with commercial and revert back if it becomes residential.
So if a developer wanted to build something there, um, are they going to have to come back to the BOC to zone it for C one or our specific zoning? Or can they build whatever they want to there? As long as it's commercial?
No, no, the, the previous ordinance that you have before you zoned it to C one, it can only be C one. So if they were to come back and requested it go from C one to C three, C four, what have you, as long as it went from commercial to commercial, the non-buildable lot status would not apply. If it goes from any commercial zoning to any resident or any use other- If it goes from any commercial zoning to any resident, or any use other than commercial, then it will be non-buildable. It could, if they zoned it to industrial, residential, of what type, um, then that would govern.
Thank you for making that clear.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Johnson, will you call the roll, please?
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
Aye. Item F, second and final reading of ordinance 2022 dash zero two, Vice Mayor.
Second and final reading of ordinance 2022 dash zero two. An ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Fairview, Tennessee, by rezoning 20 acres of property consisting of Williamson County Tax Map 021, parcel 063.00, Northwest Highway, from RS40, low-density, single-family residential, to R20 residential. Property owner, Northwest Cove LLC, agent, T-Square Engineering. Vice Mayor Anderson requested for reconsideration as the item failed to carry at the 21722 BOC meeting. Move for approval.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is the developer here?
Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, Nathan McVeigh with T-Square Engineering. Um, I can read out some points from last meeting, but I can answer any questions at the same time.
Are there any questions or discussion for this person? Hearing none.
Mayor, I'd like to just, to try and hit on a few topics to discuss tonight. Um, I will try to be as brief as possible, just trying to hit on some of these things. I've been fortunate enough to be on the planning commission for several years, trying to, to continually improve and enforce. One of the first things I did when I joined the planning commission was trying to find a copy of the 2020 Comprehensive Plan, which is what Fairview did in 1999. I found one of, one of two printed copies at the time, and we, uh, eager so much for a strategic, long-term vision, to try and find guidance and, and kinda structure to where we were gonna go. And the board a few years ago ultimately put the 2040 Plan finally together. They did, uh, um, they announced that third party. They hosted community events where they, they retained information, and they put the 2040 Comprehensive Plan together. And I was so elated, you know, we finally had something to try and follow, trying to push towards. And so, that is still what we'll talk, you'll see at the planning commission today, we'll talk about, we'll reference. And so on this particular piece, it calls out, let me find my map here. "A new residential medium neighborhood is the, the recommended future use for this property in this corridor." And so there's four development characteristics of a, of a new residential medium, medium neighborhood in our land use plan. A conventional subdivision, two units per acre. A conventional PUD subdivision, four units per acre. A traditional neighborhood development, eight units per acre. And a conservation development, six units per acre. And so this one, I think, was 28 lots on 20 acres, so it's about 1.4 units per acre. So it's, it's one of the lowest, if not under, kind of this, what was just kinda set in that place in that plan and spelled out. And this corridor is also something, and, and also mentioned, we, we finally also have a staff kinda putting these visions into place, working hard behind the scenes to increase our stormwater, to increase our zoning rates, to increase our, our commercial rates. Things are finally starting to kinda forward, make forward progression. And these half-acre lots, these 20,000 square foot lots, are some of the largest lots, not only in the county, but in middle Tennessee, that any municipalities are seeing. So I, I feel like I take pride that we're seeing, you know, half-acre lots come through. And, uh, and these fit, you know, Castleberry, McCormick Grove, Old Fairview off of Chester Estates is all in our 20 subdivision, which is what the request is here for, so. Just, just to try and hit on that 2040 Plan and some other notes, I have several different notes, if, but I won't take all the time.
And Mayor, just to add, this property is also involved in improving Northwest Highway. At the front of that property, there's the 90-degree turn in Northwest. This property will be used to help, uh, do a four-way stop at that turn, under a stop condition, so it'll improve traffic in the corner as long, well, as long as adding the Collector Road that connects the two 90s farther out of, uh, of Northwest Highway.
Thank you. Are there any other questions, any more discussion?
Mayor, I just, you know, we hear a lot about the 2040 Plan, I'm all about it. Um, 2040 Plan does not mean that this has to happen today. You know, I have a retirement plan that says I'm gonna have X number of dollars when I turn 65. Uh, but if I retire tomorrow, uh, that plan's kinda useless, uh, and things fall apart. So for me, uh, this is just a timing issue. We've got a lot going on in that area right now. Uh, and so for me, I think, I think we're adding too much to that area too quickly. Um, and so that, that's kinda where I'm at on it. Uh, it has nothing to do with, for me, it doesn't have anything necessarily to do with, uh, some of the, some of the other concerns that, that citizens have, although I, I may agree with some of them. Uh, for me, it's just a timing issue. Um, you may build a great product, you may do a great job, I have, I, I don't know if you do or not, right? But again, it's a timing issue. There is a lot going on in that corridor right there. Um, and, and I'm worried that we may not see an impact tomorrow, um, but we will see one if we go too fast. And so, for me, I think it's just kinda time to lift off the gas a little bit and coast. And so for me, I, I'm gonna be a no tonight, just as I was two weeks ago. The understand, it's, for me, it's a ti, it's a timing issue.
Sure, thank you for that. And I think one unique thing about Fairview is that, you know, the, the water in the sewer come from the Water Authority of Dixon County. And I think they do a good job of, of metering the taps, and, and limiting you on how much you could do in a certain time period. And so with everything going on in this corridor, those tap restrictions do come into play here. So it wouldn't be, like, everything going in at one time. Um, it'd be several taps over the course of years. But, but thank you for your comments.
Thank you, sir. Anything else?
Mr. McVeigh, I will just say, if there was, if this was to pass tonight, when a, a development plan comes to the planning commission, I would love to see as much tree retention buffer around that perimeter and retain as many trees as possible on that, uh, on all, you know, any perimeter where it's on.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, Ms. Johnson, will you call the roll, please?
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
No.
Mayor Rainey?
No.
Motion carries.
Thank you, sir. Item 11, new business. 11A, first reading of ordinance 2022 dash zero nine, Vice Mayor.
First reading of ordinance 2022 dash zero nine. An ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Fairview, Tennessee, by rezoning 3.44 acres of property consisting of Williamson County Tax Map 022, parcel 165.01, Highway 96 North, from CG Commercial General to RM12 multifamily. Property owner, Jonathan Caldwell.
Is there, I'm sorry, is, is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor? Any questions of the developer?
Mr. Lucas, this is the part of the property you was thinking of a little bit ago. Thank you.
Not as young as I look anymore.
Do you wanna tell us something about that?
Yeah, so this, of course, this is across from the T-Dot Garage on Highway 96. There's currently a white house, white brick house that's, uh, sets on, uh, the adjoining property. It's one of the next items on the agenda, 'cause it's a, it's a puzzle. It's got some triangles to it. Um, but our vision and goal is to build, um, multifamily product, very similar to what you see on your screen, um, for younger generation, more or less. 'Cause these three stories, uh, the bedrooms are on the third floor, so we feel there's a, a big need for, uh, some more affordable housing in Fairview, and I think this is how we can accomplish that.
Can we shut the door? I'm having trouble concentrating.
And again, this is a concept, we haven't had the plans drawn yet, because the zoning process is, you know, takes some time, and we don't wanna spend tens of thousands of dollars drawing plans till we have an idea of what we can do here. But this, something very, 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 very similar to this is our plan. And as you can see, there is two different buildings, so there's two different size square footages there. Um, one of those averages about 1,500 feet, the other one just a little over 12, which would help give us a little bit of diversity in that Columbus Cove for, for different, uh, pricing.
Just a reminder, passing this tonight opens this up to a public hearing, correct? Mr. Potter? Thank you. Are there any questions from the board?
So, Mr. Mangram, walk me through again, real quick, if you can, the Cliff Notes version of the different zonings that you're gonna do for this.
Okay, so what we got, and it's probably on a slide to come. Uh, so this bigger tract is currently zoned commercial. The tract that's labeled 164, um, which I guess is to the south, slightly to the south, uh, that is where the White House is currently sitting on one and a half acres. Our vision is to take that house, put it on a half-acre lot, which require R20 zoning, that's currently zoned R40. But we'd like to rezone the house to R20, put it on a half-acre lot, and take the other acre and put it with a 3.52, to give us roughly 4.52 acres for a multifamily project.
And, and so essentially, if I understand correctly, if, if, all, do all of these need to, to pass in order for this project to happen?
Yes, sir.
And how, and, and you may have already answered this, and I apologize. Roughly how many units are you looking at?
The project, if zoned or, i- if the total three, I think it's three different item bills here. Uh, if all of them were to approve, be approved, it'd leave us about 4.52 acres, which at that zoning would give us roughly 54, but our plan's gonna be more like the 40. So we had discussed 48 in one of our previous meetings. With the, the layout of that tract the way it is, being a little odd-shaped, we don't think that's possible. So we're, our goal is for 40.
Any other questions?
Mayor, I'll just read some of the, uh, notes that I had from the planning commission meeting. There was a 4 to 4 vote that night, and there's a, a lot of great discussion back and forth. This comp, comp plan calls this area as a transition corridor, um, office space, civic or single-family. But there's very, uh, quite a few discrepancies in that transition corridor. There's 17 parcels in that purple transition corridor on the comp plan that are, do not conform or out of zoning currently. So there's over 50% of the parcels could never be part of that transition corridor there. And there's some commercial, some multifamily next door, commercial across the street. Those are my notes from the planning commission meeting.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, there's, there's multifamily adjoining this property, and of course, directly across the street is the, the T-Dot Garage, and stuff it in storage, which is commercial, is about a, probably 1,500 yards at the very most, uh, down Highway 96. And of course, Westwood is probably another thousand yards to the entrance of Westwood from this property. So, a- a- and if this, with this product that we're looking at, I mean, they are three bedrooms for the most part, so we do think we'll have kids there, which would put them in fairly walking proximity to the schools.
Any other questions for Mr. Mangram?
The part that is in the green that is, um, to the right, what is that?
The one that's labeled 1.64?
Yes.
That currently has a white brick house on it that we, we own, that house. Uh, it's being rented. So the plan is, the house, we will continue to rent the house, uh, but we would like to remodel the exterior of the side of the house to give it some characteristics of the townhomes that, that we're looking to build behind it.
And how wide is the, where the blue meets Highway 96?
Uh, I can't tell you 100%, but it's roughly about 60 feet.
Okay.
But we're, we're looking to change that and make that a lot wider for access to Highway 96, and that's in a, one of the other bills that's coming up next.
And the multifamily that's already there is right next to you, um, extending all the way down?
Yeah, on Fuquay Lane is how it's labeled on what you're looking at, I believe.
Parkland Park? Parkland Park?
Yes, 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 that is correct.
Okay.
So you'll put some sort of screening and buffers between your develop-
Yeah, this, the RM12 zoning requires, um, buffering from lower-density properties, so we will have to put fence and/or tree screening around this to protect it from the lower-density properties around it.
Is there any other discussion, or any other questions? Hearing none, Ms. Johnson, will you call the roll, please?
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
Aye. New business 11B, first reading of ordinance 2022 dash 10, Vice Mayor.
First reading of ordinance 2022 dash 10. An ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Fairview, Tennessee, by rezoning 1.33 acres of property consisting of Williamson Tax Map, Williamson County Tax Map 022, parcel 14.00, from RS40 residential single-family to R20 residential. Property owner, Platinum Equities LLC. Move for approval.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion or any questions of the developer? And this is the house that will become a half-acre lot.
Yes, ma'am.
Hearing no questions or comments. Ms. Johnson, will you call the roll, please?
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
Aye. 11C, first reading of ordinance 2022 dash 11, Vice Mayor.
First reading of ordinance 2022 dash 11. An ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Fairview, Tennessee, by rezoning property consisting of Williamson County Tax Map 022, part of parcel 164.00, located on Highway 96, from R20 residential to RM15 multifamily. Property owner, Platinum Equities LLC. Move for approval.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Point of order, Mayor, I think that should be an RM12, and not an RM15 on that ordinance language.
That's correct, it should be RM12. I don't know how it got to be 15, but I don't think you have an RM15 zoning classification anyway. So that's just a typo, it looks like.
Do we need to re- Do we need to reread the motion?
No, Mayor, you don't. Simply the reclassification of it being RM15. I mean, I'm sorry, RM12, just for clarification purposes. So the motion would be RM15, RM12 instead of RM15.
Okay, thank you. Is there any discussion? Any questions? So this is the rest of what was left of the house property that's now been incorporated into the rest of the property.
Right, what is labeled on here red is what would be taken away from the house property as we currently know it. Um, and then the house itself would be on a half-acre lot, which on this slide is colored in yellow.
Okay. Any questions? Hearing none, Ms. Johnson, will you call the roll, please?
Second.
Oh, do we? I thought we had a second. Did we have a second?
I will, I'll second with the amended 12.
Thank you. So now we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion?
Mayor, just for clarification, the RM12 is a, a multifamily, 12 units per acre density zoning. Just, point of order, does it matter that the, does the native do the first since he made an amended motion?
No, sir. He, he was just clarifying in his second that it was RM12, noted.
Thank you.
Are we good now? Is there any other discussion? Ms. Johnson, will you call the roll, please?
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
Aye.
I'd like to thank you, all of y'all, 'cause what y'all do is not easy, I, I fully get it. And y'all've got a tough job, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Item 12, Commissioner Butler.
Thank you, Mayor. Does anyone have a basketball score update? My phone doesn't have service.
We lost.
I didn't ask that question.
Don't you wish you'd not brought that up?
Yeah, I apologize. But I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. And I lose sleep trying to read this stuff, trying to study this stuff. And I am open to coffee or to sit down and try and talk to anybody at any time. Please feel free to reach out to me. I will review it, listen to you, hear from you, and review this. And I do appreciate everyone coming out.
And Commissioner Butler, 7164, I apologize.
Thank you, sir.
Is that maybe we still lost?
We did still lose.
Okay.
But they will still be playing Monday, and sectionals will just be away. So they'll still have a game on Monday.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate everyone coming out as well. I know everybody has feelings different ways, and I'm right next door six days a week. If anybody wants to talk to me, to understand why I feel the way I do, I'm more than happy to talk to anyone. We have some beautiful developments. I think that people misunderstand that it's not all going to happen at one time. That's not how it happens. It happens in pieces. We have beautiful developments, and the developments that I see that are, what I feel is best for Fairview and our community are the lower-density developments. R 20, two houses per acre, that's like your Castleberry, your McCormick Grove, where I live in Kyle's Creek. Those are nice spacious lots with nice homes on them. I would, if I had a farm, I would not have a problem having that next to me. If somebody came in with a high-density product, 15, R 15, R 8, I would probably rethink that. But I feel like this is, you know, a good product for Fairview. So I appreciate everybody coming out. I know that we all, you know, have different feelings about what's going on out here, and I just try to make the best decision that I can. With our new stormwater, you know, email that you can send, please, you know, if you have issues, send it there and let us take, you know, let the city staff take a look at it, because I do want things, you know, taken care of with that. As far as trash in our community, I don't know the people. I have seen several people out on the different streets in our community picking up trash, and I want to thank them. I don't know them. But I think it's important for us all to try to police that and just keep things in our community beautiful and not throw out trash but pick up. So I'm next door. If anybody would like to talk to me, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Commissioner Dawson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Any kind of growth is difficult, any kind of change. And it doesn't matter what it is, if they're putting it beside you, that is difficult. Change is difficult. You know, we're trying diligently not to have the next Spring Hill or the next Thompson Station here. And with the comprehensive plan, with the thought process of approving ordinances, we are trying to maintain the culture here in the City of Fairview. And these discussions, these votes are just, they're difficult. I want to thank everybody for coming out and voicing your opinion, talking to us, discussing the issue at hand. And please never think that we don't hear you, that this is already made up, our mind is made up a year in advance. I feel confident that this board does want to listen to the citizens of Fairview. So thank you for coming tonight. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Lucas?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to, again, kind of say what some have already said. Thank you for coming out tonight. I wish we had this many people at all the meetings. I love pulling up into the parking lot and seeing this many cars in. There were some votes probably that you didn't like. There were some of us that voted yes or no that you did like. The one thing that always bothers me in the, what, six years now that I've been up here is when we hear that we didn't listen. Because we do listen. I listen. There are times when I agree, there are times when I disagree. But like most of us up here, we're just trying to do what we feel is best for the city. So please know that. I've met with some of you in this room, one-on-one, and we may disagree. But we do listen. I do want you to know that. If you don't hear anything else tonight, if you don't believe anything else I say, just know we do actually listen. And at the end of the day, sometimes we agree and sometimes we don't. But I think everybody in this room obviously wants the best for Fairview. You wouldn't be here tonight, right? There's a lot of people that aren't here tonight that could have been. So thank you for being here. I sincerely mean that. And continue, I said it earlier, but continue to pray for the Ukraine. That's, those people really need our help, and they need our prayers. So continue to keep them in your thoughts and prayers, please. Thank you, Mayor.
Sir, I have nothing tonight, so with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
And we adjourned.